Hey, Adam, I'm glad you didn't get dressed up on our account.
It's a nice sweater, I think.
I actually do like it. I'm just, I just am loving seeing kind of Adam at home instead of having to be in a suit every, you know, until the wee hours of every day. It's kind of nice.
Okay. It looks like we have everybody here and it is six o'clock, so let's call this meeting to order. I need to go through, sorry, I had it and then I blew the screen up. All right, today we'll be conducting a school board meeting of the Amherst School Board. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As chairperson of the Amherst School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order 12 pursuant to an executive Executive Order 2020-4 and its extensions, this body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to this meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.sau39.org. We have provided public notice to the, of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email A. Wallace, that's A.W.A.L.L.A.C.E@saup39.org. In the event the public is unable to access, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's get start, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where you are and if anyone else is in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Okay, so let's get started. Tom?
Gothier is in his home office by himself.
Okay, Terry?
Being in my home office, I'm alone now, but I will be joined by my husband a little later on the other side of the room.
Josh?
Unklin, I am home alone.
Ellen?
I'm in my office alone.
And I am at home alone. All right, so first item on the agenda is public comment. If any member of the public wishes to speak, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, and I will call on you and you are able to speak. So go ahead, Victoria.
Hello, Victoria Preesi. I am at Three Church Street, the Chair of the Amherst School District Ways and Means Committee. I just want to update everyone with the Ways and Means process at this point. At the bond hearing, I made a statement of the preliminary vote of our committee regarding the bond. And then at the beginning of the public hearing, which is attached to the bond hearing, Chairman Kuzma made it clear that the board would be discussing the final budget and the language for the deliberative at tonight's meeting. So for that reason, I felt it prudent to wait to see what changes, if any, are made before sharing the information regarding the votes. But that being said, I would like to make the preliminary votes public at this time. We will have a meeting tomorrow night that we will do another vote in case there are any changes made tonight. And then again, if any changes, you know, get made down the line, we just keep revoting. So that's the process. So as it stands, the preliminary votes are the following. The facility bond is 6-0, the operating budget is 0-6. The capital reserve fund, if it is written to include only the unassigned fund balance, is 6-0. The Mont Vernon tuition agreement is 6-0, and the Brick School contract is 6-0. And for anybody who is tuning in and interested, additional details about how the committee arrived at these votes can be found by reviewing the minutes from the Ways and Means meetings that are on the SAU39 website. And then again, after the deliberative, Ways and Means will create a formal write-up to appear in the voter's guide regarding final votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Um, do, if, um, I don't see any other members of the public wishing to speak. I'm going to give it just another minute. Uh, Steve Nelson. You may unmute yourself.
All right, I think you can hear me.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I just watched the video from the last meeting talking about the bond, and I'd like to quickly address that if I could. Just give you, I'm at Nine Beacon Lane in Amherst. I've lived in town about 13 years and I also, ending in September, served on the Board of Directors for the Summerfield of Amherst condominiums. So I think I'm pretty experienced with the pulse of the senior community. And I got to admit, I had heard about this bond, but I had some difficulty finding information about it. And I know you've posted stuff in Facebook and so on, but many of our seniors actually are not on Facebook, so it was difficult to find. But I finally did find it and when I actually went through it, and I must say you've done a really awesome job with the proposal. Unfortunately, when I went through it, I was mortified to see that this would add $3 to the tax rate. And if you add on some other expenses that are going to occur with the town and other school expenses outside of the bond, that could come up to $4 per thousand. That's a 15% increase in one year on the taxes in the town. And I gotta say, there are seniors in this community that are probably going to be looking to move out of the community because they're not going to be able to take the tax increase. Now, I know that you can, you can get a tax abatement as a senior. Unfortunately, the limited amount of assets, you only can have a limited amount of assets other than your house in order to get that tax abatement. And with retirement plans changing from annuity type retirement plans to 401K type retirement plans where you have your own assets and then that's what you have to live on. Most, most seniors aren't going to qualify for that. So that's going to be a significant burden on that community. And I also disagree with what you say about that it's not going to affect the real estate market. I really truly believe it is going to affect the real estate market in Amherst. Because you have to realize, the first thing that people with kids look at is the schools, and I agree. The second thing that people look at is what is the tax rate? And we will be probably the highest tax rate of the Manchester-Nashua corridor of any other town around. You look at Hollis, you look at Brookline, look at Bedford, we'll be way above them. And people will look at that and say, why should I go? Why should I go to Amherst? Now, we do have great, great schools in Amherst, and I do agree that we need to keep those. I think it's the teachers and, and the teachers are great teachers, and I think that's why we have good schools. And we do have to do something with, with the infrastructure. I do agree that you should do something with the schools. I think there's a lot of repairs that need to be done and perhaps even building a new school. But I really don't think that increasing taxes in one year by 15% really makes a lot of sense. I really think it's going to adversely affect the town. I think you need to go back, you need to look at it, and, and I would tend to agree, even as a senior, I'm 70 years old. I would agree that we probably should do that. We probably should spend a dollar or a dollar and a half, maybe as much as a dollar and a half on the schools to improve them. But I cannot justify $3 in that kind of a bond issue. And you have to think about this, think of your parents, think of your grandparents, all those folks who do not use those services. Now we're going to have to pay for them. So I know you've done a lot of work and I certainly appreciate that, but I think you really need to rethink if you want to put this up. I cannot support this and I will not support this when it comes to a vote. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much, Steve. Um, yeah, Tom does have a clarification on the $3 thing.
And for everybody who listens, thank you first of all for your comment. It's certainly not something that we are ignoring by any means, you know, we're all taxpayers in this town as well. So we understand the impact of $3, whether you're working and still have a full-time job and income coming in and plenty of years ahead. Or if you are, you know, a senior living on that fixed income, no matter how great it is from your retirement savings. But I do want to clarify, it was a little bit of, it wasn't misinformation, it was just misrepresented on my part during the public hearing. The estimated tax impact, and if you go to our building website, the jfac.sau39.org, if you go to that website, you can actually see, and then under financial impact, it's not $3 per year, it's, it's still not a dollar or a dollar fifty, like you mentioned, but it is at about 235 per thousand is the peak, and then it goes down if we pass this bond over 30 years just for these two projects. So we've talked about a lot of different things in our meetings and in the JFAC meetings and some different scenarios. So the one I was talking about, and I should have better explained it, and I certainly will at deliberative, was a potential scenario of building up to $3 the first couple of years because it allows us to build up the capital reserve fund in addition to paying off that bond. Because in the end, we're still going to need to have money to be able to fix schools. Because as we all know, with, with new houses, new cars, you still have problems. And the situation we're in right now is untenable because we have $300,000 for $5 million worth of work that's due in the next couple of years in the buildings that we have. So that was just one possible scenario over 30 years to get it to $3 and then let it level off as we build up the capital reserve fund and we paid on the bond at the same time. So I just wanted to clarify that. There is a financial impact calendar based on a 30-year schedule at the rates that we're currently talking about, kind of that moment in time when this was put together. It is as high as 235, but it does go down from there. It's not just strictly $3 all the way across as I presented in a mixed, confused sort of way at the public hearing. So I at least wanted to get that out there for clarification tonight, so.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Deborah Keo? You may unmute yourself. I hope I did not butcher your last name.
Well, you did a pretty good job. It's like the letter Q in the alphabet. And I live on 16 Field Summer, I live on 16 Summerfield Way. And thank you for taking my call tonight. I'm also on the board at Summerfield. I'm currently on the board. And I agree with Mr. Nelson. We love to have all of our buildings in repair. We don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with the amount. Can't this be phased? Doesn't have to be all at one time. The 3% is absolutely a struggle for seniors. And people say that it'll raise your property values. Well, that may be true. But then who's going to buy in here on a fixed income? It's going to be a very select few of few people. So just to echo Steve Nelson's comments and the fact that we do support the schools and we want to have them, but I think the method that is being presented and not in a more phased approach as far as the budget, because we haven't even gotten anything for the high school in here. We have not even touched on what Amherst could put towards the taxes. And it's, it's a lot to take in and it really makes a lot of us seniors squeamish. So putting that out there and hope you'll take that into consideration. And thank you again for taking my call.
Thank you very much, Deborah and actually both, both of you, I really appreciate your comments. I don't see any other hands raised. I'm going to give it just a second to see if anybody else's hand goes up. Okay, seeing no other hand raised, hands raised, we will move on to the subcommittee reports. Do any of us have any updates on any of our subcommittees? I don't think so, but you guys might surprise us. Okay. Um, so moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Okay, are there any questions on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. I think we were probably all just reading our email that was just sent.
Can you remind us what's in it this time? I remember seeing it, but I didn't look at it today. I just wanted.
The typical draft minutes, treasurer's reports for November and December. We actually have the audit report is in there. And then there's the update on our current amounts that are in our different trust accounts. And the facilities update. Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and our auditor is present this evening if the board has any questions about your audit. So the, if need be, Mr. Campo is available.
Um, should we talk to him first before we vote?
We, we always love hearing from him, so I definitely like it if you could bring him over. Josh, was your question about the audit report?
Let's let Mr. Campo speak first and then go from.
Perfect.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I can go over the high points of the audit. It's a little bit more challenging in these Zoom formats than in person. Because I can't see what everyone's faces are looking like if they want more, want less. So I'll start with the, the high points and then you guys can jump in when you feel you have a question. So I'm going to take you to page one, page two of the audit report. Anyone who's listened to my presentation in the past knows that this is the primary reason why the Amherst School District is contracting with a pub, a independent public accountant is to pub, a independent public accountant is to get an opinion on whether or not the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. And again, as I did last year, I'm happy to report that you do have a clean opinion. You met all reporting requirements. Our review of your records found nothing that we felt was inappropriate, unexpected, unusual. In the event that we had anything come up that we felt needed further discussion, your staff was able to provide all answers and support to go along with it. So that's good news. I'm going to have you jump back to page, page fourteen for a quick review of your general fund budget to actual. This is a great report because from the standpoint of your revenues and expenditures, it gives you a quick way of looking at how did the school district perform in terms of its budget. So ultimately, what happened was you started with about seven hundred and seventy-one thousand worth of of unassigned fund balance and you ended with roughly one point five million. This is an uncommon change this particular year with, with the impact of COVID, with the kids being out of school while there still were some costs that couldn't be avoided. What I'm seeing in a lot of school districts today is that there were, there were substantial savings. And looking at these numbers, I think that what you're going to find is a lot of that has to do with the with the impact of COVID, particularly you look and see student transportation, there's there, you're under budget by just under three hundred thousand. And instruction, you're also under there as well, which could be contributing to that. That's, those are the high points in the report. Are there any specific questions about the report?
Josh, is yours a specific question about the report?
Mine is about the request for a capital, capital asset policy.
Sure. Okay, so that's in the governance letter.
Yep.
Okay. So basically what we're saying is you do have a capital asset policy, but in reviewing it, what we're finding is that it, it isn't as detailed as one, Gatsby would like to see, or and two, even us as your auditors. The reason why you want to have an effective capital asset policy that identifies all these areas is it really makes the management of the capital assets from year to year a lot more manageable when you have clear-cut defined areas of what, what is an asset class? What are the thresholds by asset class, useful life, depreciation values? I don't have your capital listing in front of me, but some of the things I see when I see a capital asset policy that hasn't been modified in recent years is areas such as books are included on a capital asset listing. In terms of my interpretation and many others' interpretation of Gatsby thirty-four, a capital asset is something that's going to be long-lived and capital in nature. So when I think of a, a library book, for example, which we have some districts who carry individual library books, that's not a capital asset to me. That's really more of an inventory item. The other thing with that is if you're going to maintain a listing with library books, for example, you technically should go back every year in inventory to make sure that everything you're saying on the list is there. So it goes back to the management of lists. That becomes a very daunting task for a finance department that frankly is that they're busy as it is without having to look for what I would say an immaterial asset. Did that?
Yeah, that answers that. And I just wanted to make a note, I, I believe we started to touch on this, Beth, over the summer, but obviously it might be a good idea to make sure this is on the policy committee's radar for the summer again, to make sure that we further refine this as needed.
Yeah, I agree. I wrote that down as well.
That's all I have on.
Chris, Christine, Christine, can you? Policy. Okay. Any other questions? Terry.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to that, do we have enough guidance to be able to effectively change that? Because I know we have the comments you just made and I was actually going to ask the same question. So thank you, Josh, read my mind. But
Absolutely. That's something that if, if Adam or Katie can just send me a reminder email in the morning, I'd be happy to send over some policies that other districts have done. You can also just Google school district capital asset policy and you'd be surprised with the results that you get. And I have a lot of clients who will take something, put it into Word and then edit it to mirror what they're looking for. Certainly for a first read, it's, it's not a bad approach either.
Okay, yeah, but I think some examples of ones that you think are closer to what, to what you would hope to see.
Sure.
Would, would be really helpful. So thank you.
You know, and I'm actually putting it on my calendar now. So Adam, you don't need to worry about that. I'll we'll reach out to Katie in the morning.
Oh, you are a man after my own heart. Do it when I think about it or there's no guarantee. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Okay, I have, it, it's actually on the this same letter that we were just discussing. You gave a huge list of Gatsby statements.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that we're good. There's a bunch of requirements and I just kind of looked at it. I'm like, I really hope, like.
Absolutely. And when you look at a list like that, it, it does look a little daunting. Ultimately, when you look at most of Gatsby's, Gatsby pronouncements, what they end up being is more financial reporting. So it doesn't impact your day-to-day business. The next one that you're going to see come and impact the Amherst School District is going to be the Gatsby eighty-seven, which is the leases. And really what that is going to do is they're, they're going to no longer distinguish an operating lease from a capital lease. What, what it will be is that a lease will be a lease and all leases will find their way into your financial statements. So in a school district environment, typically if we're looking at operating leases, more often than not, it's probably a copier machine that the school district has no intention of ever owning. Something that they say will have it for two or three years and they get the new one after that, so they're not paying the maintenance on it.
Okay.
In terms of the Amherst School District and their responsibilities, it's not a bad thing for you as board members to quickly read through this. You're going to find a lot of it's not going to be applicable to you. This is, these are the upcoming Gatsby pronouncements, whether you're the city of Manchester, the state of New Hampshire, or the Amherst School District. So we don't, we don't narrow it down. We think it's important that the users of the, of the governance letter are aware that these are coming down the pipe, pipeline, but looking at these, there's nothing that's going to substantially impact your school district. No.
Okay. With the leases, so we're talking more of you know, like machinery leases, things like that. We're not talking about property leases, because this year we actually have a lease agreement up on the warrant, as a warrant with the building, because we actually own the building that the SAU sits in.
Yep.
So that is kind of outside of this. We're, I mean, we, they pay us a dollar and they cover maintenance. So we're
That probably would fall outside of it. It's still that we would review and make sure that it's being recorded appropriately.
Okay, so it's more of a recording, not necessarily a terms of the lease concept.
Correct. Yeah, no, it, it's really financial presentation. How's it, how's it being presented to the users of the financial statements?
Okay.
And the real premise behind it is that, and it's not so much governments at the local level being at a school district, town or city, it's, it's bigger governments where there may be an operating lease that users of financial statements would say, you know, the omitting this agreement and a property is a good, a good example. If you've got a million-dollar agreement for twenty years to rent a facility, many users of the financial statements can say, you know, that is actually a material, they, we would like to know that information and it may sway our decision one way or another. Primarily if you're lending to the school district or the town and you find out that well, it doesn't show up in the financial statements, there's a obligation that's not being presented. That's really the premise behind this, this pronouncement.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Campo? Okay.
All right. Well, thank you all and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So were there any other questions on the consent agenda? Josh?
Yeah, I just, real quick, item number sixteen are the two articles from two thousand and three and two thousand and fourteen. Are those just there to recognize that they exist? I'm just wondering what they are there for? Why are we consenting to them again?
Wait, what?
Consent agenda, item number six.
Oh, six. I thought you said sixteen. That's just there for our knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah.
I consent to the, it now being knowledge.
Pretty much. That is exactly, it's just sometimes things will pop up a consent agenda just to like wave it in front of our face. So things like that, you know, the we had, uh, there was something else recently that we did that with involving the finances as well. I can't remember what it was, but it's just to kind of acknowledge it. So. Terry?
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. I just wanted to thank Roger and his team for once again giving a really excellent facilities update. So it's, it's become my favorite part. I love seeing, especially because we can't be in the buildings ourselves right now. If we're not, you know, if we're not staff or a student, we're not in the buildings either. I, I have to tell people that we're following our own rules. So it's really great to, to see what's still happening. And I know they've been so busy just keeping up with extra protocol. And in the meantime, they're still getting just a lot of projects done. And I think that's incredible. And thank you for keeping us updated and continuing to just go gangbusters. Our facilities guys are not going to know the park this year. So thank you.
Thank you, Terry. All right. So I have a motion on this table from Ellen to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Tom, roll call. Ellen? Sorry, Tom.
I'm curious.
Terry?
Beam yes.
Josh?
Uncle Lynn, yes.
Ellen?
Virginia.
It was my yes. Okay. I, you know, I knew when, I probably shouldn't have done it with your screen up. Okay, so moving on to the final vote and recommendation to move warrants forward. So what we're doing is we are voting on the warrant wording of the warrant articles as well as the recommendation to move them forward. This is typical procedure, just usually happens at public hearing, but because of the feel of public hearing this year and the weight of everything, it just made sense to remove us, move or remove it from that situation and do it tonight since we had a meeting immediately after. So let's get started with the big one. I know Michelle just emailed us the actual wording of all of the warrant articles. So we are able to see those and read them. And this is the current draft. It's also what we presented and Tom and I each read at public hearing. So with that being said, let's start with the bond. I did want, going into the discussion on the bond warrant articles, I had, I'm trying to bring it up right now. You know, I had also received a lot of several emails outside of public hearing regarding the bond. And I just wanted to share with everybody what the results of those emails were. So I did receive one email from somebody who was surprised that we're even talking about building a new building, because the last that they were aware, we were talking about closing a building because we just didn't have enough enrollment. So that kind of raised a flag. Yes, this was several years ago. We started the shift and change. But it kind of raised the flag for me that there's definitely a education barrier of making sure that, you know, where we are with everything doesn't seem to be, you know, getting to everybody. And then from there, everybody else I heard of or heard from definitely supports the bond, understands the reason for it, why we need, you know, to do the construction and the adjustments and renovations to AMS and building a new Clark Wilkins. But the responses were split on the timing of it. We had an even split between people that one hundred percent agreed that this is the year to do it. You know, for the exact same reasons we've talked about, this is the year we need to do it for, you know, the cost. You know, we need to get this school built because it takes time. And all of that, the schools are in serious need of assistance. So for all of those various reasons that, you know, we've talked about a lot, half of the people that replied felt that way. The other half felt that, yes, they definitely understand and know and see why we need this, however, they think we need to wait a year. The general consensus was split between, you know, this is a really hardship year to do this. The town is hurting financially as well as everything, you know, hurting from all the other things surrounding COVID and everything like that. And to move forward this year is a little tone deaf and not the way to go. The other half, or you know, the other group or the other, you know, it's kind of actually a mixed within each response is we haven't had enough time to really educate the public on where we're going with this, what's needed, the costs of it, what the plans are and everything like that. And rushing forward without the time to really, you know, do some deep education about this could leave some permanent hurt, you know, or some permanent bad taste in voters. And it, there's a chance that, you know, moving forward, we get the, but I said no the first year and yet we're still asking again, you're not listening to me kind of a mentality. And it could, you know, the general consensus is that not moving forward could actually prevent it from getting off the ground at all. So I wanted to just share those responses. I will say that through email, I've I heard from a lot more people than in the community than we have typically. It was different. It was people in the community that we've never heard from before, which was great. I even heard you know, from comments that had nothing to do with this, but they were sharing their feelings and other things that are on the table right now. So I'm glad and happy that the community, you know, members of the community reached out to us in this way. So I'm glad that, you know, we put the ask out there to reach out. So there's that. Does anybody else have any feedback? I know Terry, you had mentioned you had some, you had heard some feedback after public hearing that you wanted to share.
Yeah, I would say that instead of waiting for feedback to come to me, I've actually been going out and soliciting it quite actively. And thank you, Steve. He was one of the people I asked, since I know he is a mover and shaker in that community. And thank you for showing up tonight and speaking for yourself. So I don't have to speak for you. But I will say that how he feels is pretty common, that there's, there is a recognition of there being some need and maybe even a big need, but that we probably don't have the time between right now and when this would need to be voted on. And please remember that we don't need a simple majority. We need two-thirds to pass something of this size to pass this bond. So we need broad-based support in our community. And I could be wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure, doesn't it require more?
Two-thirds?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent, three-fifths.
Three-fifths, okay, three-fifths. Well, that's slightly better, but it's still above fifty percent plus one, right? It is. And we know that statistically fifty percent of our community, more than fifty percent of our community does not actually have kids in our schools. So the ones that have kids in our schools, I think, have been very part of the conversation and they kind of know where we're at. Those who don't have kids in schools, it's a little hit or miss. It's some or have been very aware of, of what we've started talking about the last few years. And obviously having our previous warrants where we asked for the money to, to come up with a plan and to come back with a plan. So we have started to articulate that. But once we've had a plan and once we've had the actual dollar figures associated with it, we just haven't had that long. And in the middle of that, we've had COVID. And we've had the inability to have big public gatherings and to answer things in person and to go around. And so Zoom is great, but I think that it's really going to take time. I agree with Beth that, that's the number one, the number one and number two are exactly what she heard. We need more time to sit with this and to understand it well. And then we also need time to just see where we're at financially and emotionally. financially and emotionally and just everyone. The last year has hit them a little bit different. Our businesses are, everything else in their lives. They need a little time for that dust to settle before they can really take on one big new thing. So that that's the real feedback that I've heard from a broad base of people.
Thank you, Terry. Um. Does anybody else um have any thoughts or comments, um, you know, after hearing from the public at public hearing regarding the bond warrant article?
I, I like Terry have been um kind of reaching out to my early childhood community, parents in Amherst who have kids who won't be in the schools even for a couple more years. Um, families who maybe have just moved here as well and were not aware of the condition of our buildings, certainly not maybe publicized well. Um, and so I talked to quite a few people over the past week or so informing them that this could potentially be on the ballot and where to go to look for information. Um, and they were pretty shocked um at the information they were able to find with the website and the videos. Um, and the uh especially at Wilkins, I think they were surprised that one of them, like one of them said, um, what do you mean? There's a wooden thing in a classroom to house. Um, the, you know, the internet server. And I said, yeah, that's reality. So um, I have to say that just, and it was just about 10 families that I reached out to. And I kind of pinpointed them because I knew they were, were kind of new to town. Young families, they have a couple of years out. These are the kids who would be in the new school. Um, they were not pleased with the number as well. Who is, nobody's pleased with the number, right? I mean, in a, in an ideal world, we would be like 50 million and we're going to get two schools for that. Um, they were not pleased with the number, but they did recognize that if we put it off, it's just going to get more expensive. So I'd encourage everybody on the board. When you talk to people, make sure you're crystal clear about that. We can wait a year. Sure. When it's not COVID, we wouldn't, and we'd be, we would just be starting to really um be publicizing this bond anyways. If COVID or not, the timeline was the timeline. Yes, we can't get out in our neighborhoods face to face. That is true, Terry. Um, but the timeline isn't really that different than if we didn't have COVID. Um, but make sure you let everybody know those costs are going up, not down. So that's just my little two cents.
Josh?
So. Beth, can I just ask, like, in terms of, you know, you mentioned 50 50 split, about how many people did you hear from, like, numbers of emails that you got? Ballpark, I'm not asking specifically.
Twelve to fourteen.
Okay, so, and I think that's valid and I'm glad glad all those people responded. I would be cautious for us to sway and and make a different decision based on you know, a a limited survey of people that we collected via social media. Um, so I I do want to caution us of, you know, taking a step back and looking at the big picture. And I agree with Ellen, like, my, my stance here is ultimately the public may say no for a lot of different reasons. Um, but the public should be informed of why we may be putting it to them and letting them ultimately decide. The biggest survey we will get is when people go to vote on it. And if we fail to put it forward this year, there are real consequences for that. Um, there are real financial consequences for that. Um, so, yes, we have a short runway and all those things remain true. And and at the end of the day, I think we either need to be fully behind it or or take a step back. But I think there are real reasons to put it on the ballot this year that are not just about, you know, making sure we get it built quickly so we can get it for, you know, all the kids that are out there now. But there are real potential financial downsides to waiting a year, and those include uh bond rates going up. Uh, we know construction costs are going to go up, or at least it would be very shocking if they went down. Um, so we can wait. And and I think there are real reasons and I understand them and I respect them. They are, they are real. But waiting, um, you know, there are downsides and consequences to waiting too. And um, you know, we may hear from the public that they're not ready for this. Um, and then I think we would need to go back to the drawing board or at least um use that longer runway to better publicize. Um, and certainly in a normal year, I'd be hoping to connect with Steve Nelson and go to Summerfield and you know, have a nice big meeting and and explain to them. And maybe we can do that via Zoom, but I don't know if we can or not. So we have challenges. The question is whether or not we let those challenges stand in the way of letting the public ultimately have their say, which I think they can only do uh if we move this forward.
Thank you. Adam? You know, would you mind giving some thoughts around to this?
Uh, sure. Um, so uh I will support whatever decision the board makes. Um, I am convinced that an investment in our schools is not only prudent, uh, but is necessary for us to move forward as a school system. Um, I think that uh we have uh between a two and three dollar per thousand tax rate uh impact coming our way. Whether that's this year or five years from now, that that uh that liability is going to exist for us, that we need to make that investment uh for our school facilities remain current and cost effective and appropriate for our students. So I'm 100% convinced. Um, I am uh very proud of the process that's been used thus far. We've had a a community, a a committee that represents the community that's gone through this process to make these decisions. Uh, we've asked voters for funds to do this research and to investigate these possibilities and voters supported that first in Sohegan, then in Amherst. Um, the the work of the committee uh is not representative of my wishes or even the school board's wishes, but of the community's wishes as represented by that committee. And I think that is exactly the right way to go about this process. Um, and I think that uh all of our boards have uh convinced people of the need. I think that's true, even when we hear criticism. The criticism that we're hearing is about it's too expensive or we don't like the timing of it. But even people that are critical are often saying that they agree with the need. Um, and that's a big part of the battle. Um, for, from just my opinion. Um, in my experience, a uh when there is concern about the timing of a bond issue. Um, from my experience in Wyndham, who built a new high school and Pelham, who eventually built uh did a major renovation addition to the high school, both of which I had both of which projects had something to do with, as well as a kindergarten in Wyndham. Um, and my experience, when there's concern about the timing and not the need for the project, that uh concern about timing can cast a pall over the entire project that makes it almost impossible to pass, no, no matter how many times it's brought forward to voters. For a 60% super majority project to pass, uh, it is much harder than a 50% uh simple majority. It doesn't seem like that's a big difference. But it means that every negative vote has to be counteracted by almost two positive votes um to get to that 60% uh super majority. And so any one group in town that is opposed to it can in most years prevent that uh bond issue from being passed. And so if you, just in my experience, if I go back to Wyndham High School, when they passed Wyndham High School, the entire community was bought in on the need. Now, it was mostly because the Salem School District had kicked out the Wyndham High School kids and said they didn't have a place to go. So talk about a motivating factor. In Pelham, when they'd passed their major project, the state fire marshal had said, if you don't pass this project, you're not going to be able to operate this high school anymore. So that's a a very big motivating factor and still it barely passed in Pelham. And so I I would caution the board that uh putting it forward this year, when there's concerns about timing, could have a long term impact where we're never able to pass it. If we were conquered and we could make our own decisions without asking for voter approval, we would absolutely uh approve this building project this year because it will never be cheaper. Uh, construction costs will never be lower, bond rates will never be lower. And the need is only going to increase with time. So it's a prudent step to move forward. If we were the trustees of Pinkerton, where we didn't have to get voter approval, same idea, we would make sure it's fiscally prudent and we would move forward. But passing a bond article requires trust of the community and a partnership with all stakeholders in our community. And if any one group of our community feels like we're moving too quickly, have not provided enough opportunities for input uh or are not respecting the wishes of that community, we run the risk of never ever being able to pass it. And so uh, hearing the concerns that we've heard, where roughly, and I'm hearing the same thing, that most, if not every person I speak to has uh agreed with the need, but only about half support the timing, uh I think this year is not the year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Adam. Do any other members of the board have any comments about this? Josh?
So I I appreciate Adam's comments and I, I think I, I hear where he is coming from and respect that. And I think, I guess my concern is how do we not end up here next year, right? How do we, how do we avoid feeling like we're we're compacted by a runway again next year? We because the timeline, like Ellen said, is going to be the timeline. We're going to be here, we're going to be trying to pass um the bond and everything else. And we're going to come here again and we're going to be shortened. So we can't, we can't pass a uh some sort of bond that says we're going to put it on the budget next year. But what can we do as a board uh to make sure that we use, if we're, if we're going to delay? Um, I don't think we should delay and then be back here again next year. I think we need to delay with some sort of resolution or resolve that, hey, this is coming and and you should expect it. Um, and here's, here's what we can do between now and this time next year so that we do not end up in the same situation. Now, obviously, we we can't guarantee anything because um, you know, our board uh may change between now and then, but I certainly would like us to consider ways that we use the longer runway, if that's what we're now saying uh that we need. Um, and how do we message this to the public uh between now and next year?
So I think they um in kind of the the message that I heard clearly um in some of the emails is, you know, what we're able to do is, you know, say no. Um, obviously, we can't today make a definitive vote to put it on next year. How, you know, because like you said, that's a different different board at that point, um, potentially. So but we do have the ability that, you know, immediately starting in our February meeting. Um, you know, we can call an extra February meeting or, you know, depending on the timing of it, you know, and what else we have on the, you know, agenda that day, but we can spend some time drafting and creating a um communication plan and how as a board, we are going to own this and move forward and um passing the message. Um, so we can start, you know, I'd say, you know, immediately next month um on a way to um do what we need to do to um educate the public on this. So if that answers your question. Um, Terry, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I know that when we were talking about whether or not to even touch this bond this year, I was absolutely a proponent for I want us to keep our word. They gave us money, they gave us directions, they said, yes, go figure it out and come back with a plan. And I felt like in order for us to be people that could be trusted and and keep our word, we needed to come back. And I feel like we do have a plan, a good one. And exactly what Adam said, we went through the right process, we had a broad base of people working on it. And we all are sad that it cost what it cost. But that is beyond what I can personally control, right? I wish that I, lots of things didn't cost what they cost, that I could travel indiscriminately um once we're able to travel again and go wherever I want to do, but I can't do that either. So I feel like we can still keep our word and say, this is the plan. I think that even if we choose to take time during our meetings, during deliberative, whatever you say, to say, listen, you asked and here it is. And we are going to spend the next months. You're going to hear about this a lot because we're going to be talking to you a lot. We are going to be coming to you, coming to us, whatever you want, small groups, big groups. We do have to get together and really come up with an actual plan. And then for those who believe in this, we need help because there are five of us. And there are thousands of people who vote in town. So we are going to need broad based support and help getting the word out. But I think that we present our plan and we present our intention that all things being equal, it is absolutely our intention to have something on the ballot by next year. And yes, the board may change and yes, but quite a bit of it's not changing unless one of us, you know, moves or gets hit by, you know, I don't know, a milk truck. Do that still exist?
Jesus, please.
Pick something obscure. That's very unlikely. So I would say that I think only, only one seat is up this year, so four out of five of us will still be here no matter what next year. And and we're all committed to having it on the ballot. We can at least say that. Um, that a majority of us are very much committed to it. So I think we can still meet the spirit of what we promised and say, even the letter of it, here is the plan. But just because we have the plan doesn't mean that we um and we can absolutely say it will cost more if we wait, it will, it just will. The cost will go up, they will not go down.
You need, that's what you need to say first.
But you know what?
Decision, we're making a decision to forego a vote this year. And I just need to stop everybody with administration saying not to move forward and the gist of our chair to not to move forward without the school board's emphasis and energy behind this. J F A C is not going to have the support they need. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's not a lot of reason for keeping talking because Adam has already spoken and said he doesn't recommend we do it this year. You know, Beth, it seems that you're leaning to that too. Um, it's, that's it. You cannot get this off the ground without 100%. If everybody had just said, absolutely, we're putting it on. That's the only way, and that's not what happened.
But but I think that discussing why matters. And I think that Josh's point is an absolutely 100%. We're all 100% behind it. Quite honestly, we are 100% behind it. But we also need to be 100% behind putting our full energy into educating our community to why we need this and why it needs to happen.
So would it, would it have been a better idea, just a little hindsight here, to say um, okay, we, you know, we've, we've done the study, right? That timeline wouldn't have changed really that much. Would it have been a better idea in November for us to, as a group, if people had doubts, to say let's start talking about this for March of 22 and let's start putting the plan together. Let's say it's not going to be a bond vote. I think the unfortunate piece is, we all said yes a month and a half ago. And now we have cold feet.
We all said yes, but then we listened to people in our community. I think that it's our job to constantly listen.
Be honest with you, everybody is saying that.
Ellen, please, um, you know, part of the you know, board flow and things like that, don't interrupt Terry. Um, but also Tom's had his hand up quietly for a while um and ahead of time. So, you know, can we allow this conversation to flow in order? Tom?
Uh, so my question is, if we do move on from this, my question is for Adam. The timeline that we look at now, March of 21, we vote, uh, building committee, boards leader, citizens is formed in April. All of it leads up to spring of 24, a new elementary school being complete. Knowing that we have an extra year, if we don't put this on till next year, are there things that we can do in the meantime that would allow us to shorten that timeframe on the backend by by less than that full year? So we're not opening in spring of 25 and summer of 26, just basically one straight year back from now? Are there things that we can do um to shorten that timeframe, knowing that we have an extra 15 or 13 months to to work on this?
Yeah, that's a great question. So uh, uh, the answer is probably. The, the first nine months of any project doesn't involve any work being done on the site at all, because that first six to nine months, sometimes 12 months, is the architectural and engineering uh side of it. And the reason why that takes time is we're not going to start building something that's not been fully designed and fully approved by the state fire marshal, the state department of education, et cetera, because if we start and then something has to be changed, we've wasted money um by starting to build something that's not been approved. And so um, nothing happens at first, at least six months, usually nine and sometimes 12 months. And so uh an interim step here uh would be to ask for some sum of money for the architectural and engineering fees this year. And that buys a whole year of And that buys a whole year of, that actually keeps the project on schedule. Here's the, there's positives and negatives to that. The positive is you keep the project on schedule and moving forward. And you give the voters a second chance to approve the final design project. In addition to knowing whether you're going to get building aid associated with that or not. Because remember, the state DOE only approves building aid for projects that are shovel ready, meaning fully designed. And so approving the A and E fees first gives this, the voters a chance to see the fully designed final product, what it will look like and what it will cost, because we'll be able to go out to bid for the most part. And they'll be able to know if there's going to be any reimbursement from the state, which right now we know that's a blind thing right now because it's not fully designed. And again, it gives the voters a second chance to approve it. The downside is it requires a second approval of the voters. Meaning even if you approve it the first year, there's no guarantee that voters will approve it the second year. And even more scary, there's a chance that they'll never approve, in which case we've, we've spent money designing a project that never got built and effectively wasted that money. Another, back to the positive side, it's possible that an architectural engineering article could only be a simple majority article, meaning not bonded, not borrowed, meaning that the first approval could only be 50% plus one. And that, that approval could likely give the board some input on how the voters might vote the following year. For example, if we get 50.0001% of the vote, I'm not very confident we're going to get 60% the next year, right? For the much bigger number. But if we get 65, 70% for the architectural and engineering fees, we know we're right on track for that following year. What's questionable now is we've had a bond hearing for this particular issue. Is it possible this year to change that warrant article to only ask for the architectural and engineering fees? I don't know that question right now. My, my gut says probably because, as I've said many times to the board, after public hearing, you can't add something or increase the dollar value of something, but you can remove or reduce. And so we would, I would need to find out for you and I could possibly even step away and make a couple of calls now if that's the way the board wanted to go.
But isn't that fundamentally changing that warrant article if you're going to go from a new school and renovation? I mean, you're basically just, it's related, but it's drastically different than the original ask. Does that break that? Whatever the, is that deviating from where you should be in this? Is that, you know, kind of stretching the meaning of what this is for?
It might. Again, that's why I would need to find out. Because I just can't answer that for certain without talking to one of our attorneys. But short of that, Tom, to answer your, your, your fundamental question, without money of some kind to start the design process, the answer is no, we can't keep it on the same timeline.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Ellen? I'm good. Okay, Josh?
So I'm assuming, I, I believe there is some money left in the coffers from the money that was budgeted for this, the initial design, the initial 150,000. I'm assuming what's left is not enough to do the kind of things you're talking about, Adam. I'm assuming the kind of things you're talking about is a much bigger ask. Okay, so.
Couple, a couple of million.
Couple magnitudes, right? Yeah. So, um, so I think that is the challenge. And I think, I guess, my pause on, on doing that is it feels a little like scrambling. It feels a little like, if, if we don't think the word has been out there on, or isn't out there enough on this bond, I think a complete change in what we're doing and an ask for this. I, I think we run the risk of having the same kind of feelings like, oh, well, we voted this down. And now you're bringing it up again the next year as a larger project, or we barely voted for it. So I, I'm open to the idea if other board members feel like that is a, a good way to move forward. But I guess I would be more apt to, you know, stick with all the work that has been already put into this and message that workout, understanding that we lose a year. And that is unfortunate and I, I wish that we weren't here, but it seems like that's where we are. So I, I guess I would lean towards using the longer runway to fully message what we have done. Because I think we have agreed generally, we have the right plan. And it sounds like what I'm hearing is it's not the right time. So I would rather invest in messaging that.
Tom?
The only thing I would say is if we are going to push this back, which seems like the, the smart choice to me, I would say that I would like to have something on voting day to be able to, and again, we can, I can be corrected in the legalities of this, but I know that Oyster River, for example, gave out postcards that were pretty well done in terms of talking about the school and the project. Whether it's voting day or another day, I would like to have something to give to people around that time so that they know that it's not on there this year, but it will be on there next year to start that ball rolling. That gives us a full 12 months to do it. Again, I don't know if it's legal to do something like that on voting day at the poll plot, at the polling place, not petitioning them to vote one way or the other, but just showing them what's coming up for next year. I think that would be the best way to start on election day or thereabouts to, to give us that full year's runway to land on.
We can do that at deliberative too. Like, I mean, because we can.
Get it printed in time for deliberate. The, the type of quality thing that I'm talking about, we can do an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper. But I don't know that we have enough time to get something that's a little more nicely done that, you know, looks professionally done by that point is my only concern. So, but deliberate would be great if we have the time to get it done.
Yeah. Um, Josh?
I know the PR committee for the J F A C has been working on various things. Ellen, I don't know if you can speak to that or not, but I know the information's out there. So now it's just, I think, a matter of, if we were to do something like that, getting them on the glossy pieces of paper or trifolds or whatever. So I agree. I would like to see something like that. And, and, you know, I, given where we are, I want to take a moment to just thank everybody who has been working up until this point. For all the people who we may be making happy by pushing the pause button, I think there are going to be some disappointed people as well, who have been working exceptionally hard behind the scenes, who don't, you know, sit on these Zooms all the time, but who have been putting in Herculean efforts to get us ready. So I want to thank the J F A C committee, including Ellen and Tom for all they've been doing. And I, I hope will continue to do alongside of us as partners moving forward in the next 12 months.
Any other comments? Okay. Um.
Could we? I'm not ready to entirely drop the idea of being able to not lose a year. I feel like it's a compromise. We, we've heard from multiple people who are for it in theory, but against the price tag on a phased approach. And to me, that seems like a phase, right? To say, here, give me a more complete plan and buy me time to wrap my head around it. I would like to know if we have the option. Because I, speaking only for myself, I'm very interested in that option as a compromise.
Terry, sorry, can you repeat that?
We don't even know if, if we have the option or not. I would like us to firmly get a yes or no answer on whether we have the option of putting a modified amount that would just cover formal plans. So we could at least take that bite out and not lose an entire year.
All right. Um, Adam's going to step away for a minute. Let's at least ask the question.
Yeah.
Can make an informed, we can have an informed discussion on that. Because I think it's worth, at least worth an ask if we can modify the bond warrant. So while he is doing that, um, let's move on to article 13, uh, which is our operating budget. Um, and then, because I, I think we should hold off on a, any type of a vote on the bond until we have full information from Adam on that part. So moving on to article 13, the operating budget. So just so everybody's aware, we can, um, for the remainder of them, or actually, I guess really technically this one, we are allowed to reduce the money that we're asking for as part of the bond. That is the only thing, or just keep it as is. We're not allowed to increase what we're asking for as part of the budget. And then we take a recommendation to move it forward because technically we cannot remove the budget warrant article completely from the ballot. So that, those are our options for this one is keep it the same, reduce the amount that we're money asking for in the budget. And then at the end, we'll also be taking a vote to move it forward. So Terry?
I think we've already discussed it at length and I am comfortable with where it is currently at.
Okay. Um, Josh?
So we have discussed it and I generally agree. We have not heard, we did not hear a lot from the public on the budget, either at the public hearing, or I have not seen any emails on this. We have heard from our Ways and Means Committee, right? And so I guess I want to take a second before we move it forward. We know where they stand right now. It's possible that Tom's eloquent and Beth's eloquent speaking at public hearing maybe helped inform them in some new ways. But I think we, if we move it forward as is, certainly we know where they stood the last time. So I don't know if anybody has thoughts on that. I have some thoughts about ways in which we may trim a little more if we feel like that is a prudent step. But if nobody else feels that way, then I am okay moving it forward.
Could you tell us what you have in mind?
I was gonna say, Tom was about ready to raise his hand, so.
So I guess my, the quickest and easiest way, I, I guess, would be to reconsider the technology plan and consider putting, I, I know, I see you shaking your head, Terry, and I know, and I get it. And I, I, it's not that I am somehow now saying it's not important, but could we delay that or, and could we put that off and say, look, if we have U F B funds, we can at least put a Band-Aid on it for another year and reexamine the one-to-one plan. I know that at least one of us was hesitant about that plan. And so if, if we are looking for ways to trim a little bit, that would be the first place I look. Either as putting it towards you, putting it on a U F B situation or considering asking for a more direct payment from parents. So in other words, instead of 100, considering offsetting that with revenue that is more significant, whether that's, I, I don't know what that would look like, 200 to $500, which again is, is a much bigger leap to ask of parents. So that would be the first place I looked. I know the, the Ways and Means Committee also mentioned our non-CBA personnel raises, which would be another, it would be a small place to trim, but it could play a place. I, I don't know if we have control over that because I think it's an S A U thing. So I guess I would be wondering about where we stood on that. But I think technology would be the largest ticket item to at least bring up one more time because we did have some at least disagreement on that plan.
So, um, Tom, I'll call you on, on you in just a second. There is absolutely no CBA raise, non-CBA raises built into the budget at all. There's, it's not there. Okay. So there's no way to cut it. It's not existent. The line item is zero. So I just wanted to point that out. Tom, go ahead.
I go back to if we're not going to cut teachers and we're not going to cut technology, then I think that we're wasting our time having this conversation because we're going to talk, cut $5,000 in music stands for a band or something. It's, it's not, the amount of effort for the output that we get, it's not smart to use our time like this. So unless we're content saying no new teachers, we're, you know, we're spending enough on the teacher increases through the CBA and the extra kick in for retirement this year. Or, you know, lower computers, less computers, and we delay the one-to-one for at least a year. Then, then my thought is just to go as is, because I don't know that there's enough where we make any headway with the length of time that we take to look at it and go line by line again, as we go through this, because we've talked about it quite a bit and we've all looked at that. And again, they're just not big areas. So unless, if we're not comfortable getting rid of a fifth and a sixth grade teacher or declaring now that we want to go to, you know, we talked about last time, you know, a para for every two classes in kindergarten, unless we're willing to make those adjustments, then there's just not enough overhead in the budget where we can, we can really make an impact and do it in an efficient manner that really shows the numbers dropping from five and a half percent to 5.2 or 5.1 or 4.7.
Does any other board member have a comment about this? Okay, so seeing that, I'll state my opinion. Um, we have all gone over the budget with a fine tooth comb. Ways and Means went over the budget with a fine tooth comb. We had our administration come back with options of areas to cut and things like that. I know technology, Josh, you threw that out. We have, and I have been a part of saying, technology can wait a year, technology can wait a year, technology can wait a year. For a long time, it can't. Relying on the unreserved, or the, yeah, the unreserved fund balance or is risky, especially since at this point, we're going to be asking for $500,000 of it to be removed automatically, you know, straight off the bat. So coming up with enough to fund technology will be really hard. You know, we might not even have enough left over in the unreserved fund balance to fund that full $500,000. You know, our budget is usually very well in, um, well in line that we don't have a lot that we return. Last year was an anomaly and that was because we shut down for, you know, three months of the year. Um, so I think it's risky to do that. And in a environment that we're in right now, I, I just, I, I don't think it's responsible for us to do for our schools. Their computers aren't working. The number of kids that are being sent home right now or in the building are using broken laptops is huge. They had to buy a whole lot of headphones this year because the microphone jacks and headphone jacks aren't working. They're just not working for what they need. So I personally am not comfortable with that. You know, as for the other stuff that the administration lined out, you know, or outlined that we could, you know, get rid of or remove if we want to get down to where Ways and Means asked us to. I'm not comfortable with those choices either. Ways and Means spent just as much time with the budget as we did. They sat through all of our committee meetings. They had no suggestions on where we could remove the money from. They just said they wanted to get us to one specific number. So, you know, we have had, none of us have been able to find the real place to do that unless it's cutting teachers, cutting technology, things like that, cutting sports. All options that just aren't good for our students. So I just wanted, I, we've done our due diligence. We have looked. We've had our administrators go back and look. And moving, adjusting the budget away from what we have already agreed to maybe convince Ways and Means to change their vote. When they haven't told us what they, you know, what line items or, you know, budgets they see as, you know, areas for us to reduce. I don't think it's the right thing to do. It's just guessing. So any other comments? Okay. Josh?
So I agree. And, and look, I, I want to make clear, I believe in the ask and I believe in the need. So it's just a question of, are we willing to consider higher, a hierarchy of priorities and whether or not it needs to go on? And it sounds like the tenor of, or the tone of everyone is, it's waited long enough. And as someone who is new and maybe hasn't been hearing it as much, then I, I can understand that. I, sorry, Terry, I see your hand. And so, so I guess I'm, I'm looking for other creative solutions. And one of those that I've heard thrown around a lot that I'm going to throw out now, and maybe this is something we consider for next year and not now, but is looking for ways to offset with revenue, which we're doing right in the technology plan. As that is one of the things we asked for from the administration and they came back with a plan, which I think was better than just saying, we're going to spend a lot on technology, that there is an offset in revenue, which I think we need to make sure we are clear about at deliberative, that we are offsetting this with an ask from parents. And so is there a second ask for something like a bus fee or something like that? That we can suggest we are generating revenue to our bottom line by asking people who directly use our schools to pay a small fee in order to use the things that they take advantage of. And that I know this is last minute and so maybe we say, we got to push this till next year. But it's just a consideration that I had as I went through this process as a, as a newbie.
Tom?
We are not a private school. We are not a private school, so our, our fees that people are paying, they're already doing that to a considerable amount by paying taxes to this town. So, and it's not to pick on you, Josh, but this is why I voted against the asking for a revenue, asking for a hundred dollar deposit for computers because they pay taxes, the budget's slated to go up five and a half percent if it increases. You know, where does it stop? Is it a bus fee? Is it a computers? Do we charge them double for lunch now? So I think that we have to be careful because this is a, it's not, these aren't elective procedures that they're, that we're looking at. We say you need to have a computer for school. It's up to us to provide that. I took statistics in high school a billion years ago and I had to buy my own calculator because the school did not provide it for the elective class that I'm wanting to take. Waste of money. I shouldn't have taken the class. I digress. But it was still my choice to do that. So my parents had to come up with the money. And unless we're doing elective things like sports where you ask parents to pay, I think it's irresponsible for us to ask them to pay for more things that are basic fundamental needs of the education. Now, you can have the conversation, do we offer less bussing? That's a different conversation because you're reducing services that are mandatory. But for things that we want to provide that aren't electives, I don't think that you can ask them to pay on top of what they already are for taxes.
All right. Going in order next, Terry.
So I think two things, just a reminder that the budget amount wouldn't change even if we outlined areas where we would get increased revenue. So we can talk about it and we can, and I don't think that that needs to even be decided now, anytime during the year. So long as we give enough notice, I guess fees could be reassessed. But the amount that's in the budget, we can't, we can't make it less because we think we're going to be getting money for something. So that's just one thing, no matter what. And, and second, one of the slides that I, is one of my favorite slides from public hearing. And I think it's one of the most effective ones we have is where it does that side by side, right? Where it says, here's the cost of kicking the can, here's the cost of doing this, here's the cost of that. And because you made the comment yourself, Josh, and you're certainly not alone in, in not being in town as long. I can tell you that since I joined the board, I have been on the subcommittee for technology and absolutely we have kicked the can farther than we already should have. So we caught up some and we, we got our, we have made progress, but we have certainly not made the progress that we knew we needed to make. And now that technology has really taken a beating this last year. And we have seen really what happens when we don't have it where it needs to be. We're better than many, many districts have been. So we're lucky that way. But we need to bring it up where it needs to be and get it on a cycle and just take care of it as a matter of course. And so I don't think we can kick the can any farther reasonably.
Thank you, Terry. Ellen?
So I just want to clarify one thing because I might have it off. Is the, is the family donation of the $100, that doesn't necess, that doesn't go towards the cost of the technology. It is actually a different cost to cover a warranty. Is that correct? Just so we're all communicating, the $100 is not going towards the cost of the laptops. It's going to a warranty and hopefully I'm 150% in support of the whole thing. I just want to make sure that as a board, we just in your heads, don't picture $100 going towards the cost of that computer. If I'm right, I might be wrong.
I, Christine can clarify, but yeah, I think rather than you speaking my opinion, Christine, I think I'd rather have you clarify.
Yes, that is what the board decided, that that $100 fee, your, your motion was to collect that fee to either support the purchase of an insurance for the laptops or for a self-insurance that the district collects the money and is able to either pay to repair the laptops or replace them with that fund.
So Beth, I thought, I also wanted to say, I have been on a budget committee for seven years now. And I'm so sick and tired of trying to justify the cost of doing business in a district. And technology is a perfect example of that. Two damn teachers is a perfect example of doing that. That every year we are literally standing on podium screaming, we're sorry. We're so sorry, but it's going up because we need more teachers and we need computers because they are in really bad shape. We're not lying. We're not fabricating. So I am 1,000% in support of this budget, knowing that all of us and hours and hours, not only looking through it, but also talking about it.
Thank you, Ellen. All right. So, on that note, I, do I have a motion to move Article 13, which is the budget warrant article, over to deliberative as worded?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Everybody motion. Okay. Ellen motioned. I saw Josh's hand up next as the second. Terry, you had your hand raised. Was there an additional comment? Are you good?
No, that was to offered a motion. That was, I was trying to be good.
All right. So we're just going to roll call this with Ellen as first, Josh as second. Roll call, Terry.
Beam yes.
Tom.
Gothier, yes.
Ellen.
Grutia.
Josh.
Unklin, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Back to Article 12, which is the bond. Adam, you were not, still not able to reach anybody?
No, unfortunately I'm not.
Okay. So we don't really have the ability to wait on that aspect of it. You said it is a few million dollars to get the planned, that we're looking forward to keep it on track, Adam? Like 2 million?
I would, I would be literally making up a number, but it's, it's a seven-figure number for sure.
Okay. So it's not like we can just like make it happen. Like it's big. So it would be potentially adjusting the wording of the bond article. Josh?
Yeah, I don't want to delay this process anymore, but i- is there a, do people feel strong enough about the potential to put this on? That we want to say, look, we're going to meet again tomorrow night after we get some information? That would be, and that would be a very focused and specific meeting to say, hey, we got the information and that would be a good idea, or we can't even do it. So let's just move the, say, we're pushing the pause button, is my only thought here. Because I would hate to say, oh, we're not going to do it because we don't have the information and then really want to do it. I'm torn on the situation in general and whether we should or not, but.
I think we should probably start there. Does everybody want to move that kind of situation forward?
I personally don't because I don't feel that this gives us any more time. We're going to put forward our A and E fees to get plans drawn up and to do all this stuff for a school that number one, hasn't been approved and hasn't been fully vetted before the public. So for us to, I don't really feel like this is, it's just a different number than asking for a new school. This is still saying, hey, is something I want to do for next year? I think we need to take the time to do it right and do it all in one shot next year. If we have to push it back a year, it stinks to have to do that, but I don't like the idea of rushing to get A and E plans or, you know, money for A and E fees done. It's a lot harder to explain. And if people haven't heard about the bond, this is going to maybe make it seem like we're automatically going forward with a new school. And then as Adam said earlier, it's a potentially a waste of six to seven figures worth of money if this thing gets voted down in a year or in two years or whatever it might be. So I am not comfortable for that. I would rather just take it and on, and push it back a year. Or maybe find a way to speed it up after the fact. But I don't, I don't like putting it on there, you know, knowing that it's going to be potentially millions. I thought it would have been a much lower figure, so.
Okay. Josh?
Yeah, I concur for Tom's reasons and just from a PR standpoint too. I think we get muddied again if we're worried about people not understanding, creating this situation and having people be able to make that argument, which I think is valid to say, you guys want to spend now another million dollars to do another thing? That then we might get to vote on a school that, I hate the idea of potentially potentially doing this and then being back at square one two years from now and have a study that we paid $2 million for that doesn't mean anything. So I lean towards a camp of let's use this longer one way, let's resolve to publicize this and get behind this 100%. And, and work with JFAK to publicize this and, and don't worry about some new, new way of doing it.
Um. So. I agree. So can I have a motion to remove Article 12 from the ballot? Terry? Can I have a second?
One second.
Tom. Roll call. Terry?
Beam yes.
Tom.
Gothier, yes.
Ellen.
Grutia, now.
Josh.
Unklin, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Okay. Moving on to Article 14. The five-year tuition agreement with Mount Vernon. We already have a agreed upon tuition agreement. We just need approval to move this forward to deliberative. Terry, first, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Terry?
Beam yes.
Tom.
Gothier, yes.
Ellen.
Grutia, yes.
Josh.
Unklin, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. And Article 15, this is the lease agreement with the SAU building. Can I have a motion to move this forward? Ellen, can I have a second?
Second.
Tom. Roll call, Terry?
Beam yes.
Tom.
Gothier, yes.
Ellen.
Grutia, yes.
Josh.
Unklin, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Article 16, this is the CRF warrant article. It is currently worded as $500,000 being purled from the, up to $500,000 to be pulled from the unreserved fund balance, or sorry, unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. And can we have a motion to move that forward as worded? Terry, can I have a second?
Second.
Ellen. Roll call.
Beam yes.
Sorry, roll call, Terry. I'm looking at you. You should know. Roll call, Terry.
I just assumed it was coming to me first.
It is. Uh, Tom.
Gothier, yes.
Ellen.
Grutia, yes.
Josh.
Unklin, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. All right. So I know Michelle, so in order for these to actually be placed on the, moved over to deliberative and all of that process, we're going to be getting a, the Panda Docs things for us to sign, including the MS26. Did I get, okay, thanks. Wow. Good job. I remember those numbers.
And the default budget report as well.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be getting those if everybody can sign them as quickly as possible because these need to be posted quickly in time for deliberative. Because there's like rules on when they have to be posted by and they need our signatures to do it. So if we could do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, sorry. At some point, I just have a question about deliberative, Beth.
Okay, so is it, can it wait until the deliberative session preparation? Okay, so what we're actually going to be doing, I'm actually going to move, if everybody's okay, I'm going to move public input up so that we can then, after the next public input, we can then move into a working session, planning for deliberative. So we're going to do public, the second public input of the evening right now. Mr. Nelson, you've had your hand raised for a while. I don't know if you'd still like to speak. Okay, you can unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yep, I would. First of all, I really want to thank you. And this has been a real education for me, listening to you folks and not realizing how hard you really work with all of this stuff. But you know, Josh hit on a key point and that key point is that communication, 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 kind of like the location, location, location. And I think it's, I, from what I understand, you've killed the bond issue for this year, but you definitely would bring it up next year. But I think you really need to get out there and communicate this. And Josh talked about Zoom meetings with Summerfield. We have 77 homes in here. We certainly can do that. I have a paid subscription for Zoom. I do not have the webinar like you're using now. I produce many webinar sessions. But Deb also, who spoke earlier, she also has a paid version of Zoom that is purchased by Summerfield. So we certainly get, can get to all those folks out there. And hopefully, you know, in the course of time, we'll be able to get back to in-person and we would love to have you folks come down and show us, give, give us detail. Let folks answer, ask questions and, and you can answer questions for them. And you also might want to consider something like Constant Contact. I know that costs some money. But if you get people to subscribe and then give people updates, give people segments of information. You know, your committee and this, the building and the bond was one of the best kept secrets in Amherst. Again, I didn't know about it and most people I talked to did not know about it. And I think if you can go through and do a real good education of the folks here in Amherst, I think you have a good shot at getting it done next year. Who knows? You might even convince me and I suspect you probably will over time. Because we need good schools and, and again, I just can't say enough about what a great job you folks do. And I know you don't get paid for it and I truly appreciate your dedication. That's all I have. I'm going to let you folks do, I'll probably drop off the meeting at this point and let you folks create what you need to create. And thank you very much for letting me comment.
Thank you very much, Steve. Um, Ellen, did you?
Sorry, I did want to let Steve know that Summerfield, and as I told you, Beth, I get them all confused, is, was on our list for JFAK to reach out to. We obviously can't do anything until a bond has been approved. We can't move forward with anything until the wording is approved. So we, we had plans to, to do just that. We're going to reach out to all of the communities.
Thank you. So next up for a public comment is Victoria?
Hi. So I'm going to be speaking right now as a citizen. I have sat on the Ways and Means Committee where I am the chair. And I have also sat on the JFAK Committee and on the PR Committee Subcommittee for that group. Right now, I'm not speaking for either of those groups. I am solely speaking for myself. I want to mention that since November, the JFAK PR Committee has had a plan in place to share the information about the bond and has been waiting for the Amherst School Board to make the final call before beginning those steps to reach out to the community. I think that making the progress is hinging on board support, as many of you mentioned. And I urge you all to follow Tom and Ellen's lead as they have been quite active on JFAK. The last resident who just spoke, I really appreciated his comment about Constant Contact. That is something that has been activated. Instead of using Constant Contact, we were using Nixle through the school district and that was activated just last week to be able to share information, you know, with, with everyone as we were doing the smaller group sessions, like with Summerfield, as Ellen mentioned. On to the financial side of things, I really respect the need for our district to spend significant amount of money in the future of our facilities. As Superintendent Steele said, that this is very important in educating the children of Amherst. He questioned when and not if this would happen. Tonight, that's what he said. I am focused on the need to keep the operating budget increased to a minimum for the residents of the town to be able to handle the cost of the facilities, whether or not that's this year or in the future. So when I look at the operating budget and I, as a Ways and Means member, have said, please keep it low, please keep it to only what you need to, it's because I am looking at the increase that will come down the pike for facilities. And rather than telling the school board where I believe you should make changes or cuts to your district, I have said all along, and I still believe strongly that our administration, our school principals, I believe that they are able to make those changes and the school board is able to make those decisions in a better way than Ways and Means telling you what line items need to be cut specifically. Thank you.
Sorry. Seeing no more public raising their hand, we will close public comment and move on to the deliberative session prep. This will be a working session with the board, but public is more than, well, yeah, more than willing to stick around and listen to us. play our PowerPoints. Um, okay. So board, um, we made our presentation, um, at public hearing, of course, it was definitely an abbreviated version because we had to work within specific time constraints. But deliberative, we usually go into a lot more detail. Adam has, Adam usually gives a state of the schools or state of the district presentation, so we have that. And then we go into a lot more detail, um, we usually do have a lot more discussion from the public, um, as well at that point, but what, um, where does everybody think, you know, we need to add, change? You know, things like that. Um, I know Josh, Josh mentioned he had a list of a few things, but he had to step away really quick, but he'll be back, so I'll call him on that. Terry, go ahead.
So I don't, I don't know if you got a chance to see, um, in the state of the school, we had specifically asked if any comparisons stay statewide or at least US. We, we definitely got pushback that, um, it's great that we're competitive on a world stage, but people are more concerned with seeing where do we think we shine closer to home? And so, um, that is a request I'd like to forward, both from what I've heard and what I would personally like to see, that absolutely it should be in there, but, but in a more local focus.
Okay. Um. Also, we have the, um, Michelle did send us the deliberative presentation. Is that correct, Michelle? Sorry, I just happened to see it when I was opening, yeah, so we have a rough draft of the deliberative presentation.
Actually, what you have, you have last year's presentation as a reference.
Thanks, that does say twenty-one, doesn't it? I don't know what year we're in, it gets confusing at this point.
We have the hearing presentation, so we can, we'll pull those pieces in.
Okay. Um. And then I am also making notes. On, Chris, Dean, I know you helped me with the last one, I don't know if you're willing to help out with this one as well.
Yeah, do you want me to take?
To make sure that we both have it covered.
Yeah, happy to.
Okay, Tom.
Uh, I think the item that I was gonna mention, oh, is, uh, is more for Adam, I think for state of the schools, I do think that it's important, Adam, to, and whether it's we present it or, and you, you have the information you or Michelle to give to us, or if you guys have it, but I think it's probably good to recap what we've done this year to try to keep schools open. I think that with all the, especially the stuff that we see in, in Nashua with the god-awful show that's going on down there, um, I think that it's important to, to recognize what we've done to try to keep kids in school. And then certainly the budgetary impacts that that has as well, and maybe even a reconciliation of the extra million and a half that we kept last year, where that's been going, just as kind of a, you know, it's the checks and balances, just to show this is what we've used that money for. To, to the best that you can do that as part of your state of the schools. And then the other thing was, I don't know that we have a ton of stuff to add. I'm looking through last year's presentation and it's pretty much what we had in the, the public hearing, maybe expanding on a few more items on, on the budget in terms of technology or whatnot, but I think most of the stuff we had for public hearing is pretty consistent with what we had for last year in the deliberative. I think that the bulk of our work last year was facilities, and we certainly don't have that, have that this year with, with the bond article coming off now.
All right. Um. Thank you, Tom, Josh, you're back.
Yeah. So overall, I just want to say, I think you guys did a great job with public hearing. My, some, a few comments were specific to the bond, which obviously I, I don't think makes sense, although I, I guess I do want to point out if we want to consider saying something or we're just acting like it, it's a ghost, I, I think we may want to at least address the issue. Um, and how we do that, I think will be important, so I, I guess, Tom, that's sort of your task as the person presenting that, yeah, who had presented it, and I'm sure you'll do a great job, but, but touching on that. And I think some of my other notes were just about, you were crammed into a very short timeframe, and so I think you, uh, at times it got a little quick, um, the presentation, but that shouldn't be an issue at deliberative. I'm trying to see what else is relevant at this point from my notes from, from public hearing. Beth, I mentioned to you directly, there were a couple of times where the numbers got a little swapped on the slides and what you said. I'm sure that's just a simple thing. I do think, um, one note that I mentioned before, we are adding revenue both from the technology and my understanding was we increased, um, activities fees a little bit too, so just, uh, making sure that we make note of that while it doesn't show up, uh, it still exists as revenue that's coming in. And I think those are all my notes, but, uh, I'll look through them again and then.
Okay. Um. Terry.
Good Lord, Terry has a lot to say tonight, I'm sorry.
That look was more of, because it usually shows up on my screen in order, but it wasn't. For some reason, Ellen keeps jumping, even though on the list it shows in order of who raised their hands when, Ellen keeps jumping to that side of the screen, so it's confusing, it's weird.
Um, a couple of things for what we're highlighting, first off, I would like to once again say that I actually think that Tom and Beth both did a fantastic job at at public hearing, and thank you for, for really, you know, we, we had decided to, instead of passing the baton all around the whole circle to really let you guys be our spokespeople, and you did a fantastic job representing us, so thank you. I do think that when we're talking about how we've been able to keep as many kids in person as possible, one of the things that I would like us to highlight, two things I would really like us to highlight. Three, okay, fine, three. We're talking about not having enough space to do what we need to do, but at the same time, we've been able to keep everybody spaced apart enough to safely be in school. And I think it cannot be said enough that one of the only, there are a couple of reasons that's been true. A quarter of our students and staff are not physically in the buildings, that's just right off the top, right? They've self-selected out for many reasons, and we've given the ability to, to be virtual. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to have everybody safely in our schools, just period. And I think that that needs to be stressed, that, um, we've had to take every little, we already were using every little corner and closet and, and what have you, and we've had to repurpose a whole bunch of those, you know, we don't have arts happening physically in school, we don't have PE happening, there, it, this is not business as usual, and we just asked everybody to sit a little farther and wear a mask. This has been a real rearrange everything, reuse everything in a very creative way, and I think it's fair to really highlight that. Because this is not something that was easy to do with, with the challenges we already knew we had with facilities, right? So I think the next thing I really want us to highlight is our social emotional, is something that's been very important to us over the whole time I've been on the board, I know for sure. And some of the things that we put in place, thank goodness we did, and thank goodness as an SAU, we've been marching towards having a trusted adult for every child, having these things that have really served us well during this time. And in this last month, it's been a tragic, horrible month, and there are some things that no matter how much you try and prepare, you can't avoid. And I know that we're going to speak to it at Thursday's meeting, but I just really think it's important to acknowledge what we have done to, to emotionally be there for our kids and for our staff, because I think it's made a huge difference in the success of this year and in the success of being able to come together as a learning community and carry forward during a horrible, horrible tragedy. And so I would like those things, I don't want to sensationalize, I don't want to say, oh, you know, pat on the back, but I think that you can't avoid certain things, but the way you react matters. And what you had in place beforehand, I don't think that something fell through the cracks, I think it's just sometimes sad, horrible things happen, you can't avoid. But I think that, um, we already had plans in place and, and, and we've been able to react quickly, and we've been able to do even more, and I would like to highlight those things.
Thank you, Terry. Ellen.
I don't really have anything to add after that, but, um, I would agree, sorry, Tom, Tom, you do a phenomenal job. I kudos you right after public hearing, just to slow down a little bit, although your content is not going to be very big, I mean, you're going, you know, your slides are, you're a half-bast, buddy. So I think you, you can slow down a little bit. Again, you did a phenomenal job presenting the project as well, I was very proud of you. Because God knows, you and I have sat through so many meetings and there's so much information, you articulated incredibly well. But I think now you have an opportunity to take a breath. And I agree that with Terry, uh, we essentially are working out of a skeleton of a school. Right, so we are skeleton staff, we are skeleton students, we are skeleton activity. And so, yeah, this isn't a normal year, you're right, I think a lot of people might assume those kids that walk in the building are having a normal experience, and I'm not just talking about masks and social distancing. And of course, the kids who are at home certainly are not. And I'll put a little plug right here. I started a petition, if you haven't signed it, please do, it's on change.org to get teachers back into one B. It was on NPR today. We have like nine thousand signatures, so I think that's a big part of it, I think teachers' confidence levels need to shoot through the roof, if you want to support teachers, you could do that.
Thank you. All right. Um. So I'm I'm listening to everybody, I'm typing notes in case anybody's like, what is she doing over there? Um, I just have a second.
Oh, sorry, Beth, really quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we need to be in person if there's not a bond, wasn't that the big reason?
Yes and no, that was fifty percent of the reason. The other reason is, is, um, if we're not in person, we have that, um, we still have that question that would be first on the ballot of, do you agree with how it was handled? And the if more than fifty percent say no, everything, absolutely everything loses, including the lease agreement and the, um, tuition agreement with Mount Vernon, even if it had passed majority, it would not actually pass. So yes and no, like, I mean, for me personally, the reason I voted to do an in-person deliberative with or without the bond is, you know, fifty percent was because of the bond, but fifty percent is because of every other warrant article we have out there. I don't want to personally run the risk of that, so that's my preference. At the same time, we as a they can hold deliberative without us, like technically, none of us have to ever show up to deliberate in. So it is, you know, we don't have, so I know that each one of us has our own personal questions about safety and things like that, so we very much understand any board member that does not feel comfortable showing up in person. Um, if that's the case, we can definitely bring it back up tonight, I'm fine with that. You know, whether we still want to stay within in-person deliberative, but I do know that we still remove the rights of, you know, and the freedoms of the community to make changes to warrant articles and things like that, it's deliberative if we hold it promote. So.
I will be in person regardless, so if I represent the board, I'm comfortable with that, being the lone in person there, I am, I am more than fine doing that, but I will be in person regardless, so. Well, obviously, if we don't have anything in person, I won't go there by myself in the gym, but I'm saying if we open it up, I'll be there.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, I think that Nate did a great job, um, telling us the precautions that are in place. I certainly feel comfortable with them, and I, they're being used for all of the many meetings happening. I, I see no reason why, why we're special and we wouldn't, um, be able to, to use those same guidelines that, that all of them are using.
I guess I'll speak up then, considering it, uh, and Beth knows my feelings around this, when I choose not to be in person.
Yep. Um, you and I can talk offline about what that means and stuff. Um, I actually, talking with Nate and stuff like that, I'm comfortable, I am scared as hell, but I am comfortable with this. So I will also go in person. I will be there. So. But I know that, you know, Ellen, you and I could talk, um, offline, once I double-check a couple of things with Nate, because I know that there are some things, some questions there. But we'll, you know, work in, um, you know, a way for you to virtually, you know, be present and stuff like that, so we'll work through that. And you and I can talk about that. Um, I did want to really quick, just, there was one thing, as I was writing up my stuff on the default budget, and I I don't want to forget to bring this up, Michelle, there was the, um, remove, you know, like the, the decrease in the food services on the default budget, but then there was also actually an increase in food services that kind of offset the decrease as part of the everything else. Um, so it was just kind of awkward, if we can just adjust how that's done, you know, even if we just call it food services separately and just talk specifically about the, you know, once you remove and then you add, what's the difference? Rather than putting it in the everything else bucket, that'd be great. And, yeah. So I think the, what we had last year for our deliberative slides were great as well, um, I don't think that there's really a huge amount that we need to change other than that, what, what we've already talked about. So. Any other, oh, Terry, there you go.
I told you, you can't shut me up tonight. Um. We can still talk about, even though we don't have the bond, we can still talk about our plan, and I think we should. Maybe modified, maybe down a little bit because it won't be a bond, and maybe not first, maybe we talk about everything else and then make it last, I don't know, but I think it still needs to be part of the presentation.
Well, I think I'm gonna, I was gonna lead off with that simply because it was what we led off with last time, and it's a big-ticket item that is no longer there. I, I don't know how many details we want to get into because I think now we have the flexibility to change things and fine-tune things even more. I can give a thirty-thousand-foot view of it, but to go through the why and the how, I don't think is needed because I think we can say this is what we're going to do, we decided against it because of the timing and because of COVID and the impacts and, and some of the feedback we heard from the community, we don't think it's the right time to do it. But next year, be looking for a full-court press starting, you know, this spring, you know, laying out what we'll do over the course of the following twelve months, so, but I, I don't know, we need to go too much into detail.
I don't, I don't think you need to do the whole entire presentation, I do think a couple of the more, um, some of the more effective kind of nice sum-up slides, like I, I really, I really love the, what would it be, this, this and that, I think those were super useful, uh, those really helped me crystallize, what are we really looking at and why, why would we go this way instead of that way? I think, I mean, we can, you can sit down and, and maybe you can mail out the ones that you think you want to speak to and, and, and we can let you know if there are any that we really missed, but I, I do think it can be condensed, but it needs to be part of our presentation. Like, if we're going to say, we're going to start a hundred percent selling this, we need to keep selling this. And if we're going to say, hey, we were going to come back with a plan, we need to at least present part of the plan when we have the audience, so. Um, I think it needs to be, however you choose to do it, it needs to be there.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, I agree, in a coming attractions segment of the deliberative session, and I think you may be able to coordinate with the PR Committee for JFAK. We talk in terms of what they might be able to present at that time as well, um, in terms of like a whatever it might be, um, so coordinating with them, I think would be a good idea, there was one other small point on the, I, I assume we're still going to be talking about class sizes, um, even though that was kind of layered into the bond presentation. Uh, that slide is a little busy, and I think the important notes are the, the red numbers on the right-hand side of that slide, so in the past, I've seen Steve Coughlin use a laser pointer, um, or just pointing out the, the red ink or red, um, projection, to make people be able to go to that and see it clearly, uh, because there's a lot sort of happening in that slide. So that was my only other small thing.
Um, yeah, I think the laser pointer would be hard just because of Yeah, I think the laser pointer would be hard just because of how there's going to be people in different rooms, most likely. So not everybody's actually, I think it's going to be more zoomed into each room versus a zoom of the screen into each room. So but I think highlighting those bright things. And yeah, we need to make sure that works. And since even though we've removed the bond, it's still a key piece of information. Okay. Any other comments? And, you know, we can work on updating and adjusting the slides and things like that with what we've talked about tonight and then we'll send them out to everybody. I know that it, it's actually an active presentation that as Tom makes slide, you know, makes adjustments to slides, everybody will be able to see it. So the link that Michelle is sending out, feel, you know, everybody's able to view changes as they're made. I just don't think everybody's allowed to make changes to prevent us from accidentally deleting things that weren't supposed to be deleted. So just everybody's aware of that. Michelle?
Actually, I did want to check on that in, in terms of who you would like to have have the ability to make changes.
Do you have?
So I sent out a, just a copy of the budget hearing presentation and retitled it as for the deliberative session and we can put slides in and take slides out from, from that. And I, everybody has access to edit it. So, but I don't know who will be needing to make changes to the slides.
Um, I think Tom and I need to be able to make changes to slides. Adam, Christine, you. I think restricting access elsewhere is good because it it's, you know, I don't touch, I might make a comment on Tom. Yeah, I like, there was one or two comments that I made on Tom's stuff, but I try really hard not to touch his because he's writing his stuff and drafting his outlines on what he's going to say. And I don't want to undo that on him. But at the same time, it's also easy to accidentally make edits if you have edit access. So I think giving, you know, definitely as your, you know, board members, as you're going through, email the person involved. You know, the person is doing it, you know, during that part. I think give us a couple of days to, because we need to go through and make the changes we want to first. You know, Michelle, update this. Christine, what about that? Adam, you know, where's this information? You know, which we all do anyway. But then the, I'm really missing this slide aspect. If you can give us a couple of days for that, that'd be good. Because we might be asking for that or, you know, we might be in the process of making adjustments. So you know, but definitely, you know, email the person involved, you know, so email Tom and say, hey, Tom, you know, I saw the changes that you made. Whatever. I think might be the better way to go about it because you really don't want to accidentally move things and delete stuff for edit the wrong thing by accident, just because it's easy to do that.
Michelle, are we able to copy over the public hearing presentation and work off of that as opposed to going through and reworking last year? So I think it'd save us all a lot of work, but just starting as that public hearing was the base, we can remove and add and edit from there.
She did.
That's what, yeah, that's what I've done and I've already shared that.
Yeah.
Last year's presentation. Did you share something since then?
Yeah.
So you have the, the public hearing presentation retitled as a work in progress for this year's deliberative. And then I, I took out all of the bond hearing presentation information, but the slides that you want can be copied from the presentation itself.
Oh, and with that, then can you give me access to the public hearing one again? Cause I'm blocked. I can read only on that right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then the I think that's it. Does, do any other board members have questions, comments? About it? Okay. Hearing done. Can I have a, wait, hold on. The agenda just went, it's on a different area for me. We have no public, non-public tonight, right, Adam? Okay. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second? Terry, roll call, Terry?
Beam, yes.
Josh?
Uncle Lynn, yes.
Ellen?
Brooke, you can.
And Tom?
Arthur, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Good night, everybody. We'll see you on Thursday.